I'd like to call to order the meeting for January 8th, 2013. Dr. Cash, will you please lead us with the flag salute?
Please rise. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mejor. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Lourdes Fleischer y soy la traductora el día de hoy, bueno esta noche. Si alguien necesita traducción, por favor puede pasar conmigo. Gracias.
We do have Spanish translation. We also have translation for the hearing impaired. And with that, we will move to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
We'd like to introduce Izzy Bacon, student of San Marcos High School, who's here tonight to present the student report.
I'd like to thank Dr. Cash and the board for having me. So first, I'm gonna start with Santa Barbara and their updates. So ASP hosted a holiday celebration where students got to take a chance, got to have a chance to take a picture with Santa and read about different religious holidays. Santa Barbara had a very successful canned food drive that supported the Yundee shop. The Anti-Defamation League events are being organized to promote diversity and acceptance on campus. ASP seniors worked very hard before break to make tamales as a senior fundraiser for prom. They sold over 800 tamales to members of the community. The Donsnet Cafe came back fourth place from their competition in Bakersfield. ASP is organizing the Wall of Fame to commemorate Santa Barbara alumni. The ceremony will take place in March. The open house for the incoming freshmen will take place on the 29th where they can learn more about Santa Barbara High School. Winter sports teams are starting or in the midst of their channel league thus far. Girls' basketball and boys' soccer open league today versus Ventura, while the boys' basketball team is currently 1-2 in league and faces Dos Pueblos on Wednesday. Girls' soccer takes on Buena on the 15th, and girls' water polo has a non-league game against Montebello on the 10th. Lastly, the third annual Dons for Cure Think Pink Week will take place January 15th to 22nd. Each winter sport team will have a league game during that week where they will wear pink attire for breast cancer awareness. Please visit the Santa Barbara website for more information. Okay, so now for Dos Pueblos. The canned food drive collected over 1,000 cans for the local food bank and Yundee shop. The toy drive for the Yundee shop and community of friends resulted in a collection of 100 toys. The penny drive collected over $3,000. The chalk block festival will be awarded a square at Iman Nari. The holiday week celebration went well. Celebration of all holidays and cultures the week before break was fantastic. DP had a very successful disability awareness day, which included an assembly and guest representatives at lunch. Finally, robotics season had just begun, and the 1717 is busy working on their robot. Robot. So now for San Marcos. Boys' basketball just beat Santa Barbara 61-42 in a huge victory away at Santa Barbara High School. Our student cheering section was huge and was significantly greater than Santa Barbara's. We are so proud, we are so proud of our student section this year. The whole school really gets excited for games. We practice never putting the other team down, and we take our good sportsmanship very seriously. We're very proud of Bryce Rinhow, one of the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable Athletes of the Week. He averaged 15 points in two channel league victories for boys' basketball last week. The Leos Club just went to Pasadena to help put together some foot for the Rose Parade. The vocal department just had their annual holiday concert at the San Roque Church before break, did a very successful show. They are now getting ready to host the Southern California Vocal Competition. They have to, you have to be invited to go, and last year they went and won it, so now they are hosting it this year. Kids Helping Kids is getting ready for their big concert this Saturday night at the Granada Theater. Our show featuring Switchfoot with opener Brad Corrigan of Dispatch. This will definitely be an exciting night. The event features a silent and live auction, and the winner of our raffle item and electric bike will be announced. Kids Helping Kids has been working on this event since summer, and we cannot wait to see it all come together on Saturday. We are very excited with all this money that we are going to be able to help local causes like the Yundee shop and global causes like a school in Africa. The winners of our MLK essay and poetry contests are, for poetry, Grace Pizanat, Sienna Berlinger, Taylor Swanson, and for essays, Sarah Douglas, Renee Hadley, Fiona Chikandurakan, I apologize, Gustavo Ramirez. And that's all for them. The one-act plays for theater are back this month. It is a series of short plays performed in the round. The audience is on all sides, which makes for a very unique experience. And on Wednesday, the 23rd, leadership runs the eighth grade open house for potential eighth graders. We are already getting pumped for the January 25th boys' basketball game when Santa Barbara comes to San Marcos. Who knows what the Pride will be planning? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Bacon. Most of our secondary schools' open houses are coming up this month, and you have a schedule before you. Those are great opportunities to get out and look at our secondary schools, look in classrooms and see what's happening at those schools. We continue to evaluate our safety practices and procedures, and a lot has been done over the last several weeks in evaluating our current practices. And here's just a couple of the things that we've done. We met with law enforcement. I was in constant communication with Police Chief Sanchez and Lieutenant Arnaldi from the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office. And we also had the police department meet with all of our principals. We are scheduling campus walkthroughs with both the PD and the Sheriff's Office. We've been auditing our facilities. Again, that's something we do in anticipation of our safety plans every year, in identifying the needs that we have. One of the needs that we noted were clear signage, and so the signs are being placed right now at all of our elementary schools and they're working their way through the junior highs and high schools. And Jim Griffin from our M&amp;O staff is doing a fantastic job in getting that done very, very quickly. We're implementing a district-wide visitor log protocol process, which is probably kind of a return to the past for Santa Barbara, but nothing new for schools in our own community. Local surrounding schools have protocols on visitors, and we're gonna implement ours and make sure that we know who's on our school sites. And we're also gonna have our police department and our sheriff's office meet with our faculties at a staff meeting over the next two months and answer questions and provide input on what they might need to do or be expected to do in case of an emergency. So, a lot of great work being done. I want to thank Marlon Sumpner for the work that he's doing, also Emilio Hendel and Ben Drody for the work that they're doing, and working with the principals and our school principals in doing a great job in really organizing this. And lastly, I would conclude by saying on January 29th, we are gonna co-sponsor with our county Selpa, a special education, community education series entitled Transition Planning 101. And the event will provide information to help prepare students in creating a path to access their post-secondary goals as they transition from high school. And I want to formally welcome Helen Rodriguez, our new Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. She's back there. Stand and say hello to Helen. And yesterday was her first day in the district, and she's been meeting with staff, and I know, I think was even out at a school site today, and will be meeting with parents and getting herself completely familiarized with our district. So, and with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and welcome, Dr. Rodriguez, to the district. Board, any comments or correspondence? Ms. Idelson?
I just, is this when I talk about things that happened? Okay. This is the moment. I went to the Roosevelt International Feast, and that was mainly sixth grade, where parents brought dishes from their backgrounds and fed all the kids and parents who attended. And also, the Washington Math Challenge happened there for fifth and sixth graders in the Gate Program. And I was also there, and you too. And then the Donsnet Cafe presentation that was there at the Cabrillo Art Rec Center. And fantastic, showing, demonstrating many of the entrepreneurial inventions that the Dons Cafe students have done at Santa Barbara High. And also, the language proficient graduation at Monroe that was also Pedro and Ed attended. Excuse me. And then also toured the Dos Pueblos Academy and saw the robotics demonstration. That was incredible, with senior students getting ready to build for their next project. And the holiday parade that we enjoyed on Milpas Street. So busy.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
I did attend my first Education Foundation meeting last night, and you've gotta stop and think about this group. In the last four years, they've led the effort for over $100 million for our schools. If you think about that for a minute, you know, one group leading that, three parcel tax battles and one bond battle in a four-year period, they're exhausted, you know? And that's a lot of money. And now they're gonna regroup and go back to what their original goal was, and that's individually to help the various schools. But just think about it, $100 million for our school district is phenomenal, and I very much appreciate their effort. Happy to be on that committee.
Thank you.
Or be a liaison to that committee.
Thank you for doing that. Anybody else? I would just add that Dr. Cash and I, unfortunately after the Sandy Hook situation in Connecticut, we also attended the Galita and Santa Barbara City Council meeting because it, I know that many, there are many concerned constituents, not just our school community, but also the community at large. So we are happy that the city of Galita and the city of Santa Barbara are working closely with us and prioritizing safety in our community. So with that, we will move to public comment. And Ms. Parker, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time.
All right. Okay, seeing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herring. We don't have any close, any reportable action, no reportable action was taken during closed session. We will come back to student discipline later in the agenda. And now, we will go to acceptance of donations.
Move to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, motion passes unanimously, and we're moving forward to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull?
I'd like to pull five and six, simply because I need to abstain so we can take them separately immediately and get them out of the way.
And I just want to confirm that you're pulling five and six from the general?
Yeah, E5. E5 and E6.
Okay. All right, anything else?
And then, just a comment on the minutes, E11. Evidently, there's some discrepancy in the NOVUS program, and if you read those minutes, it appears that we took action in closed session on the discipline cases, which we obviously don't do. So I, because it's under, it's under report out of committee, out of closed session. So I'd like at least pointed out that the vote did take place at an action item. And just as a point of notice, a lot of the numbering in these minutes is off. And even if they were on, the NOVUS agenda is different than what the minutes are. And so, something happened in June 26th in NOVUS that threw everything off evidently, but, so I don't mind approving them with the addition of my comments.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Herring, anybody else?
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And we will return to E5, E6, and there has been some changes made to the minutes.
Do you want us to go ahead and just approve E5 and E6, since we can do that?
Yes, we can do that. We can do that now.
I'll move to approve items E5 and E6.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of approving items E5 and E6, say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
And it's mainly because I'm on the Board of Directors Executive Committee of the Partners in Education.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Herring. So we approve on consent agenda items five and six, four ayes and one abstention. All right, and this leads us to our action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is the affirmation designation of Elementary Gate Program housed at Washington Elementary School as the Santa Barbara Unified School District Program. Dr. Cash?
Well, interestingly, this is something that I think folklore has us, having that as a district program, but we have never been able to find that the board actually acted in any minutes or anything to designate that the district gate program would be housed at Washington. My understanding was is that years ago, it was not only Washington, but also, I believe, another elementary school, maybe Adams and Franklin, were sites designated to house the district's gate magnet program, or self-contained program. And was it last year, Ms. Parker, that we looked for that? Or was it at the beginning of this year that we did that?
Well, we have the records for Adams and Franklin, but I mean, it was never identified, they were all identified as gate magnet schools, as district gate magnet schools, not as like the district programs. This is a little bit different.
So, whether the gate program housed at Washington is the district's gate program or not, it would be good for the board to make that decision definitively. And so that's why it's on the agenda this evening.
And Dr. Cash, before we take comments, I just want to clarify that independent of whatever decision is made, there would be a follow-up conversation and an action item to discuss what that would entail.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And Mr. Herring?
I did find an open enrollment information letter to parents, January 26th, 1994, and it does say the district offers self, the district offers self-contained gate classrooms at Washington School, grades three to six. The district offers cluster gate programs at each of the other schools. Identified gate students may attend either program as space is available.
Thank you, Mr. Herring.
1994?
1994.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Ms. Parker?
And 1995 is when Adams and Franklin were added to that list.
Oh, okay, all right. So that's, makes sense historically.
I guess I just have a que, is there, is this anything beyond just an affirmation of the designation? Because I mean, there would need to be a further discussion about?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So that's it?
That's it. This is just an affirmation? Any other?
Are there any consequences to that affirmation?
Well, the only, the consequences would be those that you would determine at a later board meeting.
Do we have public comment?
No.
We don't have public comment for this. Any other questions? Comments?
Well, I'll just comment that certainly, since I've been on the board, the district administration has really tried to reinforce that this is a district program, even though there was never any board action around it. And so, I saw the district administration again and again making, you know, trying to make it clear that this was a, the district's gate self-contained classroom at the Washington site. You know, I think it makes sense to memorialize that and then it caused problems not to then follow up.
Yeah, we will.
And say, what does that mean?
Right.
So I appreciate that we will have a future conversation about what that means in terms of, you know, essentially processes and protocols in placement. So I'm willing to go ahead and move to affirm the designation of the Elementary Gate Program housed at the Washington Elementary School as the Santa Barbara Unified School District's self-contained gate classroom program.
I second that.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Moving on, we are moving to the first reading of the Board Policy Administrative Regulation 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment. Dr. Cash?
Well, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sumpner to take the lead. This is ed code, requires the board to consider the intra-district transfer policy. You did do a, and one might argue, a consideration, but really it was just a language issue in the fall. So this is really the opportunity for the board to take input and provide direction to the staff on if there should be any changes in the intra-district enrollment policy. Right, and it's coming to you with no recommendations for changes at this point. Really, it is a matter of review, an annual review as required, and then a point in time for staff to be able to take your input for making your recommendation changes, recommended changes.
Okay. So do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. I will call forward Dennis, and I'm sorry, it looks like Longa Burger. Oh, thank you. Yes, go ahead. You'll have three minutes, and I will give you a 30-second warning.
Thank you, Dr. Cash and board members. I wanted to kind of bring a face to you of a circumstance. I'm a Southern California Beach city native, and I've been living in Santa Barbara since '84. I have a business here for 25 years in the harbor, and my son wonderfully got transferred to Washington Elementary School in a transitional kindergarten program. Mrs. Sparza, the teacher, and the modification in that class, as a parent watching, is astounding. And you say, well, okay, well, given Washington is a highly ranked school. Well, as I got to know Mrs. Sparza, as of course any parent would want to, I realized it wasn't so long ago, and she was the teacher at McKinley. McKinley is where my son schooled, where he would be assigned to, and we actually attended there on the first day. A beautiful campus. And you say, well, what's the difference if Mrs. Sparza was there, and yet Mrs. Sparza's at Washington now, then it was the same level of education at both schools. Yet I'm from a split family. I have a sailing business that, for most of you that work Monday through Friday, and most of everybody in this place, when you take people sailing or you do yacht sales, your revenue source is on the weekends. So I've always been the midweek parent. I had my son Tuesday through Friday. The mother had arranged for him to go to school in Westlake. As I registered at McKinley, the only thing that would have modified everything in our life, which also would have meant that I would have been a weekend parent, yet sticking my son in third-party care because I work on the weekends, the only thing that made everything even was Washington's grade schedule was equal to Westlake, where McKinley was far below, but it was the same teachers. There may be some other factors in there, but I'm just saying thank you to allowing us to transfer by me being able to equal the grades of Washington to Westlake Village. My son's with me Monday through Friday. And so as you look at this here, please keep in mind that if we can't stay there?
30 seconds.
This is my son leaving to another town, and my not being an active father. Thank you.
Greg Vance, followed by Deborah Vance.
I have two children. One attends Washington, began Washington as a kindergartner four years ago. We just made the choice to attempt to transfer her in. We were fortunate enough to get the opportunity to go there, and it's been fantastic. Her younger brother, it was his chance to go to Washington this year. We, I was just kind of under the assumption that it was gonna happen, as he was a sibling and his daughter, his sister was already there. Didn't pay too much attention to all the rules and regulations and everything, just past practice. Everyone else I talked to seemed to be the way it rolled, so I was really looking forward to it. And in the 11th hour, things changed, and he wasn't allowed to go to Washington. So now we have split drop-offs, split pickups, split everything. It's difficult. We manage, but it's taken a lot of the joy that I've had with my daughter at Washington and walking her to a classroom every day. I still do it. She's in the third grade now. My kindergartner, who I have to drop off first logistically, because when the playground gates open at five minutes to eight and getting her a few blocks away to Washington, it's not very enjoyable. Just dropping him off in the morning at the curb and sending him on his way is not much fun. I was really, really looking forward to having them both at the same school. They did go to the same private elementary school. They had been separated for a few years, and just now at this impressionable age, I just feel it's important that they're together. And I'd like to have the board consider that. And for, just not my situation, but for anyone else who's in a similar situation. That's it. Thanks.
Deborah Vance, followed by Jennifer Kelly.
Hi, I'm Deborah Vance. I have a kindergartner at Monroe and a third grader at Washington. I'm here to ask the board to consider making a more family-friendly and transparent enrollment, transfer enrollment policy. I recognize the district's responsibility to balance budgets and class sizes and its desire to achieve a racial balance at each school, which reflects the community as a whole. I believe these are important ambitions and that granting future transfers may need to be considered carefully to achieve these goals. However, I also believe that students who have already been granted transfers and their families should be treated as part of their school's community. Presently, policy does not mention what rights a child will have once a transfer has been granted. This is a woeful omission, since they seem not to have the same rights as other students. I'd like to call attention to the district's new strategic plan, specifically to action step 11, always put students first, under which the plan states that every student will feel respected, valued, and have a sense of belonging. I ask the board to reflect on the current second-class status of transfer students, in which they can be displaced at any time during their attendance by an area student. Does this, in the board's view, foster a sense of belonging for those children and their families? It seems that if the board wishes to include all students in its strategic plan, it must consider giving transfer students a more permanent citizenship at the schools they attend. Leaving security of young children to the mercy of the ebb and flow of area population is irresponsible, if not cruel. Please show these children that the district values their families and their participation as much as it values anyone else's. Policy aside, the past practice of the district has been to admit sibling transfers. So much has this been the case that last year, the office assistant at our area school didn't even want to give me an enrollment packet for my son when we brought in our transfer slip for signature. She said, he's a sibling, he'll get in. Yesterday, when I went to the same person again to have my transfer slip signed, she did not make the same assertion. Sadly, no one seems to know any longer what the district administration will do. This is a great blow to the integrity of the district and the feeling of trust parents should have in it. Now more than ever, clear policy is needed to guide administration. With that in mind, I would like to request that policy be amended to state that, once admitted, transfer students and their families will be considered part of their school's community, such that younger siblings of currently enrolled transfer students will be granted the same access to enrollment as area students. I'm certain this request is a great inconvenience, as it would be far easier for the board to make as few changes to existing policy as possible.
15 seconds.
However, the job of the board is never easy when it's done well. Please consider expanding the rights of current transfer students and their siblings to benefit the children, their schools, and ultimately, the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Kelly?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Kelly. I came here tonight, I wanted to ask for the district to have compassion for transfer families. I have a student at Washington, she's in fourth grade, and a kindergartner at Adams. Sorry. Did you hear that? And I just, I'm please asking that you look at the policy, write it so it's not loosely, that it involves the community and children in compassionate way, the families that provide, they give both to the schools and the community. Thank you.
All right, so that
All right, so that concludes public comment. Board, questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
In the actual policy in AR that we're looking at, in fact, it's really just the policy that we see a minor modification this year, simply because the first paragraph accidentally got left off last year. And so we put the piece back in about the concept of neighborhood schools, but other than that, there are no changes at this time, correct, Mr. Sumter? And I just want to comment, because we had parents here, that, you know, the board, there was actually an issue. We didn't, we used to give first priority to program improvement transfers over everybody. And so there was an issue at Washington School about four years ago, Mr. Herron, where siblings did not have any priority, or they had a priority, but it was well below program improvement. And we did a lot of research at that time and realized that we could make it so that we could give priority instead to children of employees and children, siblings of current students. And we worked hard to bring that up in priority order, because we really did care about families being kept together. The reality is, is it's not just at Washington, but at every school. And this has always happened. Sometimes there is not room for sibling transfers. And this was a really unusual year at Washington, when there was just a huge number of students, of siblings, that were trying to get in, and just very little space for sibling transfers, or no space, as far as, you know, that was the last that I heard. I don't know if it's still the truth. But we did work hard to make sure that there was, there's a very high preference for siblings. So when space is available, that they're, they have a chance, a good chance of getting in. One of the issues is that ed code requires that if boundary students cannot be displaced by children outside of the boundary of a school. So it's not just this board's decision, it's state law, that we have to place students within the boundary area first. And there are some districts that I've seen that try to essentially make transfer students part of that boundary area, once they are placed there. But I have absolutely never seen it where it's the transfer family, it's the student that gets that spot. And, you know, I'm sorry that families count, and they always do. And I know that they're always disappointed, and it's not just Washington this year. That it happens every year, you know, that there's places where students don't get the spot that they want, and they don't get to follow their older brother or sister. And I know that that's really hard. But sometimes that's just the way it plays out, and I was just really disappointed at how it played out at Washington this year, because I know that so many families were disappointed.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Herron?
Yes, a lot of changes took place four years ago. And I guess we never do a good enough job explaining to our parents what our policies are. But the policy is very clear, and every parent who has applied for intra-district transfer has a piece of paper that says their spot's not guaranteed. It says excessive enrollment of attendance area students, the transfer may be terminated because of that. So it's in the documentation. You know, we sort of just think, because in the past it's happened, it's always going to happen that way. But when you have a school like Peabody, I'll use that as an example, where they have a waiting list for kindergarten of 55 kids, and those kids live, some of them across the street from Peabody, and can't get in. But our policy scrolled down a tiny bit under enrollment priorities. You know, no student currently residing with the school's attendance area shall be displaced by another student transferred from outside the attendance area. If I buy a house in Washington School District, or any school district, any boundary, I'm entitled to my kids to go to that school. That's the number-one priority. And we, you'll notice, we have under number two there, any sibling of a student already in the attendance of that school. That's a high priority. But if we have, if we have children within the boundary area, they have to have priority over that sibling. The thing about this that bothers me more than anything else, not bothers me, but concerns me, is because of the policy we just took, or the change, the action we just took previous to this, that changes all this dramatically, in my opinion. Because all of a sudden, we have a, at Washington, we have a GATE program that anybody in the district is entitled to apply for. But our policy says, oh, no, you can't get in because priority is given to the kids attending that school in the boundary. And that, what has happened is, how many GATE students do we have outside the boundary area at Washington?
Just a handful, I believe.
Just a handful, because our policy doesn't let them go there. And so I think the whole policy needs to be changed, or there needs to be a subsection that says, at Washington, the GATE program, these are the rules for that program. And this issue of boundary students taking priority would not be a part of that, I don't believe. You'd have a lottery for every grade level in GATE at Washington that if there's 40 kids who want to get in, you'd have a lottery, and, you know, 30 might get in. But it would be a cross-section of the district, not boundary students at Washington. So I don't know how you go about looking at this whole policy, but because of the action we just took, I think there needs to be dramatic changes in treating the GATE cluster as a separate entity within the policies. Here are the attendance rules for GATE at Washington, and here are the attendance rules for non-GATE at Washington. So somewhere, I need to see how you're going to react to that, when you have registration coming up, and you try to use these policies to abide by the action we just took, saying that it's a district program. Because if it's a district program, every kid in the district has a right to apply to get in. And so I need, we need to look at that.
And Mr. Herron, I believe that that conversation will come back to us in the future, and there will be nothing done abruptly without a conversation and research.
Two weeks from now, you'll begin, excuse me, two weeks from now, you would begin that conversation.
Well, but this is the first reading, so I presume there'll be a second reading. But I would never approve a second reading until we have that problem solved.
Ms. Edelson?
Yes, I agree greatly with Kate on many of these things. And I think so important is the communication to the parents that, you know, what the district is policy, and like Ed has said, that it's on the form, and that you understand that if you're going to the school and you're getting, oh, of course, your sibling's going to be able to attend, that you understand that that may not be the case. I, as a parent, experienced what you're describing, and it does work out fine to have more than one school in your children's lives, I will say. I mean, it's definitely a hardship to travel across town, but I think in the end, it was enriching to be a part of different school communities. So it's not the end-all, as a parent, to have your children experience that. And maybe at this point, that's not, doesn't feel good. But looking back, I think, you know, I learned to drive across town quite often, and it was, it worked out okay. So I, that would be important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edelson. And I would like to add that I think that the California Education Code makes it pretty clear how we have to give priority. So I think that, I know that when I've talked to members of the public about one of the things that you find out, being a school board member, is how much you have control over and how little you have control over. And so in this case, I feel the school board has reviewed this policy annually, if not twice a year, some years, and because families are important, and keeping families together are important. And I would agree that as we move forward, we will likely need to think about inter-district transfers and inter-district transfers for our sites as being one, perhaps, policy, and then a different policy for any magnet or specialized programs. Because it could be the case that in the future, we might not have one program, that's a special and unique program. It might be multiple. And so how we think about providing every student opportunities. I know that I've talked to parents at Cleveland School, and this issue actually also is an issue at Cleveland School, where students and families have a hard time Roosevelt. So I think that this is clearly a broader issue. I really thank all the parents who came to provide us feedback. And one thing that I definitely hear that we need to look at is, if there are elements of our policy that are not clear, then how do we clarify those? And how do we make sure that the parents know that? I know that one of the questions I've had is the waiting list. We have a waiting list there that's listed in our, I believe it's the AR. And I don't know how it works, and I don't know who I go to to find out the status on the waiting list. So I think I definitely take to heart and I take, I think as a board, take responsibility for those elements that aren't clear. And I would like to think about how we can make them more clear. And I want, and I definitely think that as we move forward, we'll have to think perhaps about two different policies for our sites at large, and then for specialized programs. And I don't, I think initially, it may impact the program at Washington, but I want to be clear that this is actually district-wide. So there is the possibility that we'll need to apply it to other areas. Ms. Parker?
First, I guess a technical question. It's down here as a first reading, but it's actually a second reading of this board policy. You brought this to us in the fall. And it is on for action, and I think it was intended for action tonight as a second reading. So I guess my question is, when Mr. Herron is talking about, for example, how we will have to address the Washington situation when we're talking about it being a district GATE program, and no longer the Washington GATE program in terms of enrollment, is that going to come back as part of 511-6.1? Or is it coming back as a 511-6.2?
It was not going to come back as part of this policy unless requested by, or instructed by the board.
Okay, so is it going, but is it going to come back as an AR or a policy?
Yes.
Okay, so, but not, but a separate one?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that makes some sense to me.
Dr. Pass?
You know, I'm just, whoops, turned it up as a push-in again. That I think it's really great that we do have this opportunity to review this every year as required. And it gives us the opportunity to kind of, to engage our community, and especially our parents, to find out what is happening in our community, and what, how is this taken up? And whether it needs more clarification. And it obviously does. We have parents in the audience who have expressed some concerns about their children, and obviously some need for clarity. So I think it is a point that I would echo, just as you are, to say that we should always strive to make sure that it is as clear as possible. Because the one parent that doesn't understand it is the one parent that they may come to us and want to have that point clarified. And even if it's clear to us, it may not be. And I find that often the case in my job, when I feel like I'm being clear, and I'm not. So I just want to make that point. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Pass. Mr. Herron?
If we have now said the GATE program is a district program, does that eliminate the need? Does that get around the, when we just, the priorities? That because it's a district program, it doesn't involve boundaries of Washington anymore? Somehow that takes it away from the ed code and separates it out?
That is correct.
That's correct, okay. Have we designated, in the, in the policy, said by the first day following January 1st of each year, the superintendent shall identify those schools by grade levels, which may have space available for additional students? Is that list available to the?
Not at this point, no.
Is it going to be available?
Well, we'll make it available, yes.
Okay, that is part of the policy. Are we have, I mean, what are we telling parents now who have students that want to try to get into the GATE program next year from the district? Are they going to have any priority to get into the GATE program? I mean, are we going to have a policy in place by the time?
Well, we're accepting the transfer applications, for whatever reason, to whatever school.
But right now, we're just accepting them to the normal way, to Washington. I want to get into Washington.
Right. At this point, we're accepting them the normal way, until we have established the protocols that we're saying will be separate from this.
Okay, and so right now, boundary students, under the current policy, boundary students have priority in the GATE programs from anybody else, even though we've said it's now a district program.
No decision is going to be made till after February 19th, because the, and it's my hope and the board will work toward-
Having that answer by-
Prior to February 19th.
So we'll have it, we'll have it-
Absolutely.
For this coming school year.
Yes.
And I also want to just add that, I mean, this board can choose that it may not be something we implement this year. I mean, this board hasn't had that discussion. So, I mean, I think that that's to be determined.
Okay, just one other tip, similar comment, but I'll make it. Just for people who are interested, who are hearing this about Peabody School, their deadline is the end of this month for applications. So if anybody's thinking of Peabody, their deadline is earlier than ours, for the main reason, if you don't get into Peabody, you still have time in our district to apply to another school. And so that's why Peabody has an earlier cutoff. And they have their first lottery, I think it's February 6th. And it's only for boundary students. So if anybody's interested in Peabody, their rules are a little bit different than ours.
Ms. Parker?
We do have one more public comment. Kim Wilson, Ms. Wilson, you cannot speak on item, let's see, G1, but you can speak on G2, since we're still taking this item. Transfer.
I am a Washington parent. I have a fourth grader who is in the GATE program, and I have a first grader as well. I live within the district boundaries. And I realized this issue was going to come into play, obviously, Mr. Herron, regarding making this a district-wide issue. I'd like the board to address formally in the future, as you are discussing this, to parents in a transparent way, what exactly you intend to do with those students who live in the district, in the homeschool of Washington, who get into the GATE program and yet are not, do not have access through lottery? Because if in that fact, in fact that happens, I will have a child who is not getting their additional needs met, and also not able to go to their homeschool. So instead, would you have me go to Adams or Roosevelt and have them go to a pull-out program at that school? And I think that's a really important issue that needs to be discussed as you move forward.
I'll let Ms. Parker.
I, anyway, so, I don't need a transfer, but I live, you know, I live there. And it may not be an issue for me, but it will be an issue for some parents.
And I guess I will just ask Mr. Handel at this point, that as that comes, when we're talking about the processes for a district lottery into the district program, is the intention for Washington to create its own GATE program?
Yes. The short answer is yes. Every site will create their own program.
Well, and I want to add too, that I think we've seen one quality program, and we know it to look like one way, but I think it can look a lot of different ways. I think quality programs can look different. I mean, we haven't even begun the discussion, do, you know, if it's a district-wide program, does it stay at Washington, or does it move to a different location? Is this something that's going to be phased in and will impact students? I think that that discussion can happen. The idea is you have a quality program. I've heard all the parents talk about the quality program. And how do you make sure that if it's a district program, supported by district resources, district students have access to it? So I want to be clear that we haven't had that discussion, and we can be as creative as we want. And perhaps we haven't even thought of some of the creativity or ways that we can think about how to continue providing quality services and education for our students.
We hope to provide you with the stimulus for that creative conversation, starting at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Any other comments, questions?
No, but I'm willing to move to approve BP and AR 511-6.1.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All right. So we have a motion on the table, a discussion.
Was this the first reading or did I miss something?
It's really this, it says first reading, but it's the second reading. We got this, you remember when you, when you first brought up the whole thing about how the paragraph was missing? That was, was that in November that we saw it?
I believe it was.
I guess I, I came with a misimpression. I thought this was to start the discussion, if any changes that need to be made. Here's the first reading, now what changes need to be made? But that's not the interpretation?
But that's what we did at the, at the last time we talked about it.
Yeah. I thought we approved it at, at that meeting.
No. It was no because we wanted to see it with a.
I can't remember if this was the policy, we had to check minutes that there was actual.
Yeah, I don't think that we took action on it.
And you also have the opportunity to move it directly to actions if you should desire. So, I mean, that's clearly within the board's prerogative. It's really up to you whether you'd like to see it again. I haven't heard any, I have not heard any direction to staff yet on what changes you would like to see being made in it. I think what I, what, what I heard was, and correct me, Mr. Heron, if I'm characterizing this incorrectly, was a concern regarding the, the gate program. And then I clarified Ms. Parker's questions about that coming forward as a separate item that would not be part of this. So absent some changes to this or an inclusion of that in this, a recommended, recommendation to do that, then I think Ms. Parker's motion is probably appropriate.
And I, I will add that actually, so for AR, I do have a question about the waiting list. I don't, I, I think that it's, I don't understand what happens with the waiting list. Is there a different, I mean, I think so far it's been kind of an internal process, but if you look at page two for AR, number three, it says, "A waiting list by grade level shall be established to indicate the order in which applicants may be accepted for openings to occur." Who keeps this waiting list and how do parents find out the status on that waiting list?
That waitlist is maintained in the People's Services Office. And there's communication between my office and the school sites that have a waitlist to monitor openings and seat openings, as well as using AR's reports to see what the enrollment is like in teacher-student ratios.
So can you, so that's where the waiting list is kept? Can you explain to me how one would find out the status? If I had a child, how would I know what rank he or she would be in?
Well, they first of all get letters when the lottery is conducted to, to let them know what their rank is. And they can contact our office anytime. Typically, we will contact them when we are working with the school, determine that there is an opening available. We have done that already this year. Some have accepted openings, some have declined openings and chose to leave their student at the, the home site.
So if I'm a parent, I can call and say, what's the status? And you'll tell me, well, you're number six. So there's three or five, whatever, students ahead of you. But then that can change, correct?
It can.
If we have an application from.
If we get somebody that goes to accept a spot.
A resident student.
Yes. And of course they would be, they could be number six on the sibling list or number six on the other list, which is a lower priority, or number two on the employee list. So we, first of all, by, go by the ranking order established by policy. And they may be, maybe number six on the sibling list, but overall could be number eight because there's some employees, students yet to get in ahead of them on priority.
Okay. Well, and I just want to, I know that I've heard from parents that this has been confusing. And so I think I want to make it the least confusing as possible. So I'm hoping that this could clarify a little bit if any of our parents are following this.
Mr. Heron?
In line with this, I know I've attended several of the lotteries and it's very interesting to be there. You might want to invite the rest of the board members to attend one so they can see it firsthand. And as I said, Peabody is having one February 6th that you're all invited to observe to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Heron.
They do it.
February 6th, we will be attending.
It is, well, better not overwhelm them, but it is interesting. It's a, it's a, it's a very, it's a very orderly process. And each category is done separately, priority right down the line. And so everybody who is there leaves the room knowing exactly what number they are and at least at that point.
And that's what Peabody Charter School does. We don't necessarily do that.
Peabody does their own lottery.
But we follow the same process though. I think part of the confusion is, Mr. Sumter very accurately assessed it, is that because we have, you might, you have different numbers under different priorities. And that, and, and absence of moving to a single priority with a single list, you will still have issues where a family is number two on one list, number eight on another list, and maybe has three and is number 12 on the third list, which is confusing.
I did notice on the board policy that it says revised October 23rd. I'm fairly certain the motion that I made and handed out in writing was act on. I think we did do it at that October 23rd meeting and this document sort of indicates that we did. But, so I'm not sure we need to vote on it again. I guess there's no harm since we already did once. But my vote would be very, very clearly that this doesn't solve the problem that I'm concerned with. And doing it with the reliance that that problem will be solved before we, in one way or the other, so the parents have a clear understanding of what's going to happen when those lotteries begin.
Well, I, I would say absent a change, it would, it would continue in this, it's, I mean, if, if for some reason the board could not reach a, a decision on what a district gate program looked like in relationship to transfers, then it would simply be the same system or currently would default to the status quo. It would be no change in what we're currently doing, so.
Ms. Parker?
I would just note that there is no revised date on the AR. And so I'd just like to go ahead and with my existing motions.
All right. So we will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the AR and BP?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right. Motion passes. So we are moving on to approval of Santa Barbara County Local School Attendance Review Board Bylaws. Is that Mr. Sumter again?
It would be Mr. Sumter.
That would be me again, yes. The Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Office has initiated the implementation of the truancy program countywide. And part of that is, requires the establishment of bylaws for the SAR committee and SAR process. And so what you have in front of you is what has been established, at least in writing, on paper at this point, and is for your review and approval as part of the county's program and implementation of the new truancy called the Class Program now. I forget, can't even remember what the acronym stands for right now. But it's, it is a very similar program to what was in place prior to its termination. I think it was in 2008. And so what you have here are the bylaws that were established. Each school district in the county is reviewing these by their boards and, and seeking approval as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. Board, any questions or comments? Mr. Heron?
Under quorum on page three or four, it says, "A simple majority of the representatives from membership categories listed in, in four, A through I." A through I doesn't really indicate, it just says, "May include representative, include representatives from the following." Since that's a plural, I'm sure what it means is each one of those might individually have representative. But I don't think it's very clear. I think I'd rather see it say SAR membership may include a representative from the following. So then when you do a quorum, I'd hate to have the District Attorney's Office have three people there and have three votes. I think the intent is that each of these organizations has one vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in a quorum, they, you know, I think because the representative is plural, it adds a potential of having more than one from some of these A through I. So I think adding the word a representative to make it singular from each of those A through I would make it clearer.
And you're talking about under membership for that, add the word A.
Instead of representatives, a representative from the following.
Ms. Parker?
And I just, I mean, I thought that these were fine. I really appreciate what Mr. Heron has just said, except they're vague. These, these are sort of bare minimum bylaws and they don't even include something like making it clear that the membership will be an odd number, for example, so that you can have a definitive vote. But I would agree with Mr. Heron's change. I don't think I have, I, I can see that they may need refining as they, as they move forward with it.
That's acknowledged, yes. Yes, that's understood.
But I understand, and, and remind me, who was it that created these?
The District Attorney's Office.
The District Attorney's Office. So the, yes, they may find that they need to bring these back to us.
I might add that it was, it was modeled after another school district who has had SAR in place continuously for quite some time.
I'm sorry, I just realized there's one problem with my motion is that the one category that's spelled out differently is J, school districts, because each school district does have representative. So it'd be a representative. I'd like you to look at that and see if there's a way to, to make sure that A through I have one representative. Because in the quorum, J is, is eliminated as part of the quorum because there are so many school districts and they will have more members. You only need one for the quorum. So the school districts will have more than one representative. So my, my change wouldn't solve that problem. But is the intent that A through I have one member?
That's the intent.
Okay. That's fine.
So Mr. Heron, you've made the motion, correct? Or did I hear the motion?
Just. I'll make the motion, we approve the Santa Barbara County Local School Attendance Review Board Bylaws.
All right. Do we have a second? Dr. Pos.
I'll do this, I'll do the second, but I have a question. You know, when you look at the, the membership of Student Attendance Review Board and you look at who's here, it's mostly agencies, school personnel, county probation, county health, a number of school categories actually, and then E, parent. And that's not even required. And so I, I kind of wonder, and it's more of a point of clarification, why we only have one, you know, we look at the composition and, and numbers aside, we only look at having one parent possibly? And maybe there's more, maybe there could be more. But my, my point is that that's, you know, we don't often always take on the parent view and it just seems like it's going to be even, even if we have a parent or two parents, that that still would be overshadowed by everyone else who would have a different point of view.
I might just, just on a side, say undoubtedly many of these other categories will be parents, but not necessarily be the parent representative.
Yes. And they're not playing that role, just like me. When I'm here, I'm not playing my role when I have my normal day job. So that's all I'm trying to say.
Okay. And that's a point that I can make with the District Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Dr. Pos. Any other comments or discussions? All right. So we do have a motion on the table. I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Santa Barbara County Local School Attendance Review Board Bylaws? Who can? All right. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right. Moving on to the approval of the lease with the City of Santa Barbara for the Eastside Library and Franklin Center property. Dr. Cash?
Are you ready, Ms. Chite? Or would you like me to take it? So this is, shouldn't be new, news to our three continuing board members. Part of our Adelante Charter School is situated on property owned by the City of Santa Barbara. We've negotiated a very, a lease very favorable to the, favorable terms to the district with an end date that is correlated to, but not exactly related to, the lease that we have with them in relationship to the property that the district owns that currently has one of the fire stations on top of. The lease, the lease has been vetted by our council.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, any questions or comments? Mr. Heron?
Dr. Cash just used a word that bothers me.
Oh, sorry.
He said Adelante is using it, but this agreement is with Franklin School using it. I'm curious as to why.
It's on Franklin School's property.
But, but it says, the operation of Franklin Elementary School. And so when we say, "Operation of Franklin Elementary School," that includes Adelante? And that's a.
If you would like to, to clarify it and have it say Adelante Charter, I'm sure there wouldn't be any problems with that. It was just that that's, that, that, that property was originally given to Franklin School or allowed to be used by Franklin School.
I guess if I was an Adelante parent or a board member, looking at this, I might say to myself, oh gee, Franklin has control of this garden that we put in, Adelante. I mean, they have their garden there on this property. It seems to me Adelante should be included in someplace to make sure that they can continue using it in the way they are currently using it unless we make a change to that, but.
Well, it, it, from my take, it really is an agreement between us, this district and the City of Santa Barbara. So if, if, if you're, if you're not happy with the, the, the language within it, we can certainly change it to say Adelante Charter as opposed to Franklin Elementary. Franklin Elementary or Adelante, Franklin Elementary can't enter into an agreement. Only Santa Barbara Unified can.
Okay. Just, so, just so we don't create a situation where Adelante feels that they're left out of it. That's my only concern.
Ms. Parker?
Well, my concern with changing the language in it is that legally that is the Franklin Elementary School property.
Correct.
And this is between the district talking about its property that is named Franklin Elementary School, whatever, whatever use that particular piece of the property is being put to. So I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate to, to change the lease as long as we have a written facilities agreement with Adelante, which we do.
Which we do, which gives them the use of that property.
Any other comments or questions? All right. So do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion denied.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Pos. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Edelson. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the approval of the lease with the City of Santa Barbara for the Eastside Library and Franklin Center property, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Now we are moving on to the board action on student discipline. Cases numbers 12/13-05, 12/13-07, 12/13-08. Ms. Parker?
In case 12/13-05, I move to approve the recommendation of the hearing panel for a once-per-year expulsion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
In 12/13-07, I move to approve the hearing panel recommendation for a full expulsion for once-per-year.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
And in 12/13-08, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a suspended expulsion for once-per-year.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right. So this leads us to our conference agenda. Item number one on the conference agenda, Santa Barbara High School New Course Approval, Small-Scale Food Production. And we have Dr. Droudi, who's going to introduce the item for us.
Good evening, Governor's Board. Dr. Cash, I'd like for you to take into consideration for discussion tonight, a new course for Santa Barbara High School, Small-Scale Production. And Santa Barbara High School has gone through all the district protocols up to this point on what to do for new course approvals. At this point, I'd like to invite Mrs. Elise Simmons, Assistant Principal for Santa Barbara High School, to. High School, to provide more details about the course, and also assist me in answering any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cash, he's turned down to Mr. Summister. You'll see up here the course approval description, and I just wanted to give a brief summary. This course actually is not really new to Santa Barbara High School, it used to be a dual enrollment course through Santa Barbara City College for many years. And, um, we have since, I have the instructor here as well, Dr. Caballero, so he can, he can answer questions. But we have since decided we wanted to make it a course that was for Santa Barbara High School. And the reason why we've done that is a couple reasons. We wanted to have more control of the curriculum, we would be able to align it more closely to the Common Core state standards, we could all, we're also thinking about how it's going to fit into our new, the brainstorming of our Culinary Arts Academy. And it also is going to allow us to diversify the population of students that will be able to take the course and be successful, and also be able to differentiate, again, the instruction for all students in the course. And the, the gist of the course, I'm just going to show you to G, which talks about the rationale for the creation, but in this course, students will learn a variety of practical food production skills for urban and suburban spaces. They'll participate directly in all stages of food production, from seed to soil to harvest, and you'll see it ties to environmental, technical, and culinary interests. At Santa Barbara High, we do have a greenhouse, a native plant nursery, large gardens, small working farm, excuse me, and orment, and landscaping. And so where the students are, that's basically their classroom. And that's where I'm going to leave it for in summary, and if, just open it up to any questions or discussion that you have, and I guess that I have Mr. Caballero here, who can assist me in answering any questions at any rate.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Um, I guess my first question is, is this meant to be taught by the AP instructor?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, I know, I think that most students that take AP Environmental Science are 11th and 12th graders, is that correct?
Yes, the large majority.
Um, but AP Environmental Science is considered a pathway but not required?
Exactly.
So, would freshmen be allowed to take this freshman and sophomores?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and they won't be at any disadvantage for students that have, if they go in with 11th and 12th graders in terms of background knowledge?
I'm going to have Mr. Caballero come up and speak to that directly, because he can answer it better than I can.
No.
Thank you.
My brevity, I like that.
And I guess my, my other question is, the, in terms of the facilities, you know, the, the greenhouse at Santa Barbara High School, great space, but means all, you know, it's falling down. And, um, and I don't know what plans are in place for, for taking the space that you have and really developing it, I don't know if you can address that.
We've been, um, looking at a couple of options for that space. This course is teachable, almost any place with dirt and some open space. In a pinch, and at other sites, it could be taught in about this much open space. If we had sunlight hitting this and we could irrigate it, we'd be pretty much able to teach it. Um, you'll notice that this doesn't really have a lot of the specifics about different agricultural methods, it's just to introduce the kids to the, the basics, container growing, small gardens. So that, it's not dependent on the greenhouse facility, and coincidentally, that was one of the curricular limitations of working with City College, that it was more space-dependent to teach their courses. I feel that this is flexible, it's not tied to the particular space now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Board? I haven't.
Since, back in 2010, before the bond issue, and it was a primary, has anything changed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, well, no, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, that, um, it's much tidier, we've improved some of those benches that were falling apart, we've received continuing support from a number of foundations. We have, um, added some bees, um, we have a couple of chickens, um, and, uh, the, the fundamentals of what was wrong with the space are still wrong with the space, that the roof is bad, and it was kind of shoddy construction to begin with. But we have made gradual improvements on some of the lesser troubles, not the main structural stuff.
Thank you.
Um, is this space below the cafeteria?
Yeah.
That I'm imagining?
Yeah, that's right.
And is there, what's the acreage space, uh, besides the greenhouse?
I think it, it adds up to about two acres for the, the greenhouses plural and the gardens plural. Um, the, the food production garden is under 2,000 square feet, native garden is about half that. Orchard space that we're hoping to expand is 1,200 square feet or so.
And will the majority of the food production be outdoors, or will there...
Yes.
Okay.
And we've already, um, in the past, grown food for the cafeteria, and that relationship is strengthening now that it's open again. It's really promising, we're really stoked on it.
All right, thank you. Dr. Pos?
So, I noticed that in the, in the last part of, of this, uh, of this form, that there is mention that you're working to grow native plants for our local schools. Are you working with our grounds crew to kind of have them put in place and to be sustained in terms of that? Is that, is that the effort behind that, as it's mentioned?
Uh, so far, we've worked with the ground crew at Santa Barbara High School. We've installed, uh, three separate small native gardens. I have to admit that at first, I wasn't really sensitive to the ground crew, I, I take responsibility for that, but we've gotten better at that. One of our promises is for federal funding to support the production of the plants, the installation would be a separate set of negotiations that we really can't enter into until we know whether the class will fly, then we know our volume. But we're trying to collect the species, we've developed a special type of soil with a, an agricultural company in Camarillo, and so we're on the cusp of getting to that next.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. Um, I, so it's moving from a dual enrollment course where students would get community college credit to an AP class where they might get, not AP class. So if I am a student at Santa Barbara High School and I look at this from the lens of the student, what complaints may I have? Like, is, are students going to be upset that this is no longer a dual enrollment class, and should we expect that parents might also, like, worry a little bit that this is in dual enrollment, or do you not anticipate that this is going to be issue?
No, that's a reasonable concern. The, the dual enrollment was a good hook, coincidentally, that's off the table anyway. And so, I think that dual enrollment may have been the preference of some percentage of our students and some of our parents. I liked that for other reasons, there were benefits. That's off the table entirely, so that opportunity's already lost, we don't have a choice there. Now the choice is between no class or building another one. And in that comparison, um, there are some students who I think are, in my limited experience, a little put off by the dual enrollment stuff. It is not in actuality a big deal, but I have met kids who, when they get the application, they stop coming to the class. In previous years when it was a dual enrollment class, I think, for reasons I'm not really clear on, some kids were maybe intimidated by that City College issue. And it did make kind of an interesting social thing, because it was one of those magnets that tends to draw the more motivated kids, and so then you have this social kids not matching up, not being very inclusive. I think as a really open-ended college preparatory elective course, it kind of casts a broader net, and maybe we lose some of the most highly motivated students, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily problematic.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, this is, um, a conference agenda, do we need to provide some direction, or are we good with the discussion?
This is just discussion for now.
Okay.
On the 22nd, we'll bring it back for action.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Droudi, thank you, Ms. Simmons, and thank you, Mr. Caballero.
Is there any reason to have them come back, and do we, for CID issues? Could we take action?
It's up to you guys.
If it comes back, it would come back and be consent, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it would come back in consent.
But if we just take action now, we, we can avoid that. I, I'll move that we approve the Santa Barbara High School New Course Approval, Small-Scale Food Production.
I'll second that.
All right, so we do have a motion on the table. Any discussion?
I have one question. It mentions here our new culinary pathway will also deal with issues of food sustainability and production, so this course fills the need there as well. What is in place for the culinary pathway that you can bring us up to date on for that?
Um, there is not anything in place, we're still in the brainstorming stages, and we're actually, right now, last I saw, was an email setting up a meeting with Nancy Weiss and our chef teacher in the, of the, in the cafeteria. So we're still at the beginning stages of brainstorming what that academy will look like.
Okay, so this is just saying, this would be in place, therefore, if that does occur, this would be an input into it?
Yes, that's our vision.
Okay.
A piece of that, of the Culinary Academy, yes.
Any other questions or comments? So we do have a motion and a, on the table, so I will call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the Santa Barbara High School New Course Approval, Small-Scale Food Production, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have discussion of proposed San Marcos High School Entrepreneurship Academy. Dr. Droudi?
Yes, thank you. San Marcos High School would like for you to take into consideration, for you'd like to consider for discussion only, a new academy at San Marcos High School, titled Entrepreneurship. And, um, I've invited, uh, Principal Ed Behrens to talk about the program a little more, and also to help assist me in answering some questions. I want to caution that we will bring this back on the 22nd for action as well.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. Mr. Behrens.
Thank you, I'm very excited to be able to present this proposal on the Entrepreneurship Academy after a year and a half of work on it. We started by taking a team of teachers to Mark Keppel High School in the Alhambra School District to go look at their International Business Academy, and we were pretty impressed with their academy, but we came back saying we think we can do something even more exciting in Santa Barbara. And then after many meetings with people like Michelle Magnussen from Partners in Education, staff from Santa Barbara City College, the ROP Director, and many of my staff at San Marcos, we came up with the concept of entrepreneurship. And noting that Santa Barbara itself is a very entrepreneurial town, and we have a lot of startup companies here, we just felt like that was a nice fit and a unique opportunity for students to have the potential of exploring entrepreneurship. So we started having meetings with Santa Barbara City College to explore offering Santa Barbara City College classes at San Marcos. I met with Dr. Diane Hollams and ended up meeting with the Chairperson for the Business Department, the Chairperson for the International Business Department, and Melissa Marino, who's the Director of the Scheinfeld Entrepreneurship Center at City College. And after several meetings, we finally got approval to offer the Santa Barbara City College Courses at San Marcos for our Entrepreneurship Academy, for our students at San Marcos with teachers that meet the minimum qualifications for the City College classes. So basically, the concept is, is that students would apply in the ninth grade to be accepted into the academy in the 10th grade. Then in the 10th grade, the students would be taking a marketing course, one marketing course in the fall, and one marketing course in the spring as they're elective, and then they would have the normal coursework of any other student. Obviously, we want this to be a smaller learning community where there's other opportunities for students to do things like job shadows, internships, we would create business partners in the community as part of the smaller learning community. Then in the 11th grade, we would have the Santa Barbara City College Finance classes, and in the 12th grade, the students would then go into the AP Micro and Macroeconomics, the Kids Helping Kids Program with Mr. Jamie DeBries in the fall. And then in the spring, we would have the, um, the Small Business Plan course where students would actually have a concept that they might have already started developing in the 10th and the 11th grade, and actually bring that more to fruition, creating a Small Business Plan. And then in the end, they'll be actually presenting these Small Business Plans at a Small Business Plan Competition at the Scheinfeld Entrepreneurship Center, where there'll be actual funders there who could potentially fund these concepts that students come up with. So, the final, and the final thing that might be an outcome for some students in high school is that they come up with a concept, they present the concept, someone funds their concept, and they leave high school starting their own business. So we're really excited about the, the concept, that's kind of where we're at. We have received some funding from the community already to help us hire Alex Shelvin this year to help get all the coordination going so that we can actually hopefully launch this next fall.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Board, Ms. Parker?
Um, I love the program, I think it's great, I think I need to go back to school. Um, and so that piece, I'm, I'm thrilled, I think you've come up with a great career tech pathway, and I'm really excited for this to come to San Marcos. My concern is what happens again and again as we create these academies, do they end up reflecting the student population, or do they not? And so I guess, I want to be really clear that I won't support this if it cannot demonstrate that it is open to all students and that it ultimately represents the student population. And so that means, obviously, we could approve it, but that we might revisit it if it does not end up doing that. And, but my question for you right off the bat is, when you went to look at the model program that you were talking about, and I don't know anything about that high school, and I don't know anything about the district that it's in.
Yes.
Um, and so, I guess, I'll first ask, was that a diverse school?
Yes.
And was the program, did that program show that it had a diverse student population?
Yes.
And was their admissions process the same as what you've proposed?
To be honest, we were just looking at what the courses they were offering, we went and observed in classrooms, and we really didn't get into what their admission process was.
I think that would be something really important to look at before it comes to us to approve, for approval, because if they have a representative student population in their classes, and they have something, if they have an admissions process that, that works, um, then I, I just want to be sure that ours is not one that sets up barriers where they already have an example, you have an example of, of, of something that can draw students from every type of population at school. So I'd appreciate it if you take a look at that.
The demographics of Mark Keppel is, it's, it is a very diverse school. There wouldn't really be a way to have a non-diverse... There wouldn't really be a way to have a non-diverse program at Mark Keppel because it's an extremely diverse school.
So what you're saying is it's a majority-minority school?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I would still be interested in looking at what their admissions process is.
Okay.
And and I guess I'd see if you could look around the state and see if there are any other examples of schools that are more like ours, which are 50-50. Where we do have issues with academies and admissions processes and cultural practices within the academies that tend to lead towards segregation.
Page seven of the proposal, there's an application process that I've outlined.
And I completely appreciate that. It's just that I've seen this kind of thing so many times and it doesn't always work. So I would it would just be great if it's already worked someplace else that we don't reinvent the wheel.
We'll do that.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. Mr. Behrens?
On page eight, the long run seven, under the applications, it gives two criteria that will be weighted equally. Academic record grades for term one and two. Is that the same as quarter one and quarter two?
Yes.
In the document, so in your four-year plan sample back on page six.
Yes.
They'd have to take English, math, and an elective that's either an honors program or a college preparatory class and get a 3.0 in those in those three slots? English, math?
That's just a sample, four-year plan that you're looking at on page six. So basically, whatever their coursework is, there's no, it says range is college prep, which is it could be any of those combinations.
Right.
There's really no limitation for students. As long as they're doing well academically, they should be able to be successful and we will provide support for them to be successful.
In the group they were trying to target, are they likely to take the first grade quarter one, quarter two, those types of classes?
They can take college prep. They could be taking the quarter three and four classes in the fall or vice versa. Every student's schedule is different, but whatever their coursework is, if they're being successful, they'll be considered.
Okay, that's not going to be a disqualifier or an easy disqualifier, that first criteria of?
No, we're, we want students to, I think that one of the important concepts is that the student has an interest in entrepreneurship. So, you know, we want students who have a passion and an interest for this, for this area. And then also, we want students who are going to be successful. But we don't want, and we do want the demographics of the program to match the demographics of our schools. So we're doing a whole bunch of items as listed to make sure that that does.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that's not a filter to filter them out.
Right.
Okay.
Dr. Bus?
You know, when I'm looking at that same page and I'm looking down and I know your goal is to have 50% Latino student representation and the next sentence after that is beginning 2013 outreach efforts to La Cumbre Junior High and La Colina Junior High School will be made to help identify students. You may not have an answer exactly tonight in terms of talking about that part of it or what you plan to do. But I would be curious to know more about what you want to do in terms of that. And I'm really happy you're actually taking the effort to go at, to that level, to go and talk to the junior highs about that. But I would be curious to know more about what you plan to do to actually accomplish that. What are your outreach efforts would be?
So one concept is creating an entrepreneurship club at La Cumbre Junior High. And I've already spoken to Joanne Caines regarding that concept and she was in favor of it. So that's something that I listed that we want to explore. And hopefully, that can come to fruition. That would be a great way to identify students at an early, you know, stage. And then another concept is potentially offering like a pre a pre-academy elective for ninth graders. So if students are already identifying themselves in junior high and then taking that pre-elected course in the, or the pre-academy course in the ninth grade, then those students could potentially just funnel right in nicely. So those are two concepts that are listed pages seven and eight.
Ms. Edelson?
Yes, no mention that I see about summer internships or anything. And at least I know, you know, the kids between college years are doing, that's like their foot in the door. And I'm wondering, is there any way that that could be incorporated into this?
Absolutely. We have a whole, that's why we need the academy director to get all of these things off the ground. We have a whole bunch of great ideas that we, we want to, you know, have happen, including the internships, the job shadowing, summer internships. There's a whole bunch of great opportunities for students that we're really excited about. One of our parents helped design a a entrepreneurial incubator in the funk zone. And that currently has some office space that isn't being utilized. And he was identifying some of that office space potentially for San Marcos students to actually work in side by side with startup companies. So there's a whole bunch of cool possibilities out there that we're, that we're going to be exploring, including summer internships.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. I'm excited about the opportunities that it's going to provide for our students to think about education and entrepreneurship at the same time. Like Ms. Parker, I, you know, I'm hesitant because so often these great ideas come to us that exclude a very important student population. So I think that there's a few things. One, the goal really needs to be that at the time of enrollment, the enrollment is such that it reflects the school. Because if it doesn't happen in year one, I don't know that it's going to happen for a while. I know that you can make it happen because I've seen what's happening at San Marcos with the nursing program. So I know that it can happen. The, so I think it's really important. This is a very, I mean, when I think about access to education and equity across the board, I know that this is potentially really great. Kids Helping Kids, what's the participation demographics of the Kids Helping Kids group at San Marcos?
I know that we have 106 students who are taking AP Economics. And so I believe that's the largest number of students of any of our three high schools that are taking AP Economics. So the diversity in there is we have more Latino representation as far as total numbers versus the other two schools. But I don't know the exact percentage. It could be something around 20% is what I believe. I know I made a presentation to Dr. Cash early in the year about all of our demographics and all of our AP and honor courses and AP Econ was included in that. And that was one that was better represented than many. So I think it was in the 20% range. Obviously, if we're going to have feeder classes feeding into that and they have higher Latino representation, that would bode well for the future of that program.
Absolutely. And I would even look on your own campus. I mean, what are the practices that make the nursing program successful? And I mean, really explore that because if you can replicate those practices to a program like this, it would be really helpful. The other thing I think of is there's this tremendous opportunity. We have a Hispanic Chamber of Commerce here in town who I automatically can think of several members who are on the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce that would actually be great to bring into the junior high that might be a feeder to the high school as mentors, as business owners, as individuals who work for corporations. I think we have to, this program is a good program. I'd like to see good things come out of it, but from the start, it has to be reflective of the school demographics. And this is not to put any percentages, but it has to be reflective of the school demographics. And I would draw upon the success of the nursing program at San Marcos.
The Health Academy.
The Health Academy. Sorry, I shouldn't call it, sorry. The Health, thank you. The Health Academy. Thank you. The success of the Health Academy at San Marcos, but also look at like programs. So if the high school you visited, and it's in La Hamba, right? Paramount.
Alhambra. It's Mark Keppel High School in the Alhambra School District.
The demographics are very different. So I would look at like schools across the state to see what they're doing. And even if it's not an entrepreneurship program, to see what their recruitment practices are if they're more successful. I think it's going to take some time and research, but I think at the cost of having this program be successful, I think it's a well investment that needs to be explored. Dr. Bus?
So, you know, you have your application, your criteria, and then you're going to select 35 10th grade students. What are you going to do in circumstances where you have more than 35, say 50 apply?
So, well, I listed several locations, the word at least. So I don't really know what the interest level of this program is going to be. I'm hoping it's going to have great interest. And so, I mean, if we had 70 students that were interested and we had a teacher that was able to teach two sections of the course in the 10th grade, I would have no problem offering it to 70 students.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I would just note, because as we're, as we're talking, I'm looking at the Health Academy application and noting that it's a series of questions rather than an essay. And that it doesn't, I don't know if there's a minimum GPA for the Health Academy, but at least it's not on the application itself. So, throwing that out there.
And the other thing is Partners in Education, besides having amazing ideas and programs, there's a way that some of their programs that they have are actually diverse and they could possibly be feeders. So it's also maybe not just specific targeting. Well, I guess if they're going to start their ninth grade year, you have to target at the junior high, but.
No, it starts in the 10th grade.
10th grade year. So thinking of anyone that's participating in their programs, also their career fairs. That's an opportunity. There's a lot of folks in the community who volunteer, but perhaps getting interest through the career fairs at feeder junior highs would be another way to think about how we can increase the diverse applicants for the program.
I'm confident that we'll have great diversity in the program. Alex Sheldon, the director, and myself have already identified several ninth graders who are Latino and have shown interest. And so we're encouraging them to apply for the, for the program. So I feel confident that we'll have great diversity and it'll be a huge success.
Good. Thank you. Alright. Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Thank you, Dr. Droudi.
The recommendations you brought up, again, we're going to bring this again, up again on 22nd for action. But would you like to see those, our work between now and then, in there, in the document?
I think so. Please.
Would you like it as a separate document? Or do you want it integrated into this entire document? Because all of it, what I heard was around recruitment and retention.
I think it'd be great to, to, to put it in this document, but note that maybe in italics that you added those pieces just so that we know and then obviously the final document will be different.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and now we're moving on to the exciting update on the Common Core standards.
Gosh, I'm glad you said exciting.
I am. I'm excited.
That's really cool. Well, contrary to my best intentions, I'm going to have a PowerPoint presentation, so. Well, partly because we have two new board members. And we, as you, as you know, and the public will know, we're going to, for the next six board meetings, provide you with information, be available to answer questions as we move forward in implementing the Common Core. It simply is such a large conversation and such a potentially big change in the way we conduct ourselves that to try to just do it in one meeting just simply didn't make sense. So you're going to not hear from me for six straight meetings. We're going to bring forward teachers who are participating in the planning now. Dr. Droudi, Mr. Handel will also be presenting. We want to try to give you as clear a picture as we can as we, as we're moving forward with implementation. So a quick history. These are college and career readiness standards, and I think the coolest thing about it is the career readiness. It's the intentional statement that these are career-ready. We're attempting to produce students who will be career-ready. Lots and lots and lots of work was done in the creation of these, these standards. Well, feedback, I was part of a group of, through the California Department of Education in my former job as a superintendent in Clovis, as one of the K-12 educators that participated in that process. And we heard a lot from content, our teacher content advocacy groups, college professors about content, what was developmentally appropriate, what needed to change, what needed to stay. And that process, that's just in California, was repeated throughout the nation in 45 states and the District of Columbia. So it was, it was, I think, a highly vetted process. It was adopted by the State of California in August 2010. Next slide. What are they? Well, they're really, they're aligned with college and work expectations. I like to think they're much more coherent and focused than our current California standards when I look at them. As you look at them together, they're much more coherent. One leads to the next. It makes a lot more sense. And I think there's also a good argument that they're much more rigorous and require a higher, higher level of thinking. And importantly, through that vetting process, they're internationally benchmarked. We hear all the time, one of the critiques in public education is that the Common Core, our, our current content standards, our students can't compete against countries throughout the world. These standards have been benchmarked against standards found in other countries. The next slide. It's organized right now really around English Language Arts and Mathematics. And English Language Arts is organized very uniquely, much differently than it has been in the past. Three main sections, K-5, 612, English Language Arts, and 612 Literacy in History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects. And that's a very different organization than our current organization around English Language Arts, which is really more just about the four strands noted below, which are also included in the Common Core. And that's reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and language. And then a really important additive to English Language Arts is that the media is required. And that's also very different. And it's, as noted above, it's integrated. What I would advocate are the key advances or changes is that we now have an intentional balance of informational texts and literature that we are going to be looking very deeply at text complexity across the English Language Arts, Science, and Social Studies. Our writing is going to be, there'll be an emphasis more on argumentative, informative, and explanatory writing, which I think is great, a little less narrative writing. We will, students will be writing about sources. I have shared with you in the past that we will have students that will in the, in the assessment process, and we'll hear about that in the next six weeks, where students will write to a prompt, be required to go out onto the internet, obtain resources to support their argument or their explanation of their answer in response to the prompt. Also, I think is a kind of a recognition of the changing world and and I'm, this is one of the times when my, I'm glad my dad isn't aware of what's happening in public education, is that where it will be an inclusion of informal talk as well as formal talk, which I think is a recognition of the changing nature of the way we communicate, both verbally and in writing. So I'll be fascinated to see how that gets rolled out. I think it'll be very different five years from now, 10 years from now. Just recognizing that, that that's important, that students are aware of that, and are actually taught that is good. And the language. Typically, our language has been very English language dependent. But this is also going to go to what the, they're calling the domain-specific vocabulary, which is simply the fancy word for, going to teach science. for, we're gonna teach science words that are gonna be important for science understanding, social science words that are important for social science understanding. They'll be intentionally and specifically taught in the English Language Arts, part of the Common Core, which obviously will be very helpful for kids. Math. Now, math is gonna be, math, we're gonna present a more in-depth look at the next board meeting. There's a lot of issues in relationship to math that we're grappling with regarding the Common Core. What I like is the goal, and I put that first, and that's that our goal would be so that the content standards describe the habits of mind of a mathematically expert student, which I think is a really great visual for us. The K-8 standards are presented by grade level, so we would have math in kindergarten, math in first grade, but differently would be 7th grade math and 8th grade math. And then, the question that we will bring forward and ask for direction and guidance on is, what will we do with algebra in grades 7 and 8? What will we do with geometry in grades 7 and 8? And I think, you know, we have some really great minds working on it, and we've come up with a number of pathways that we'll bring forward for a full discussion with the board at the next board meeting about that. The high school standards, interestingly, are presented by conceptual themes as well, and those themes are noted. So, less of a, this is the Algebra II class, this is the pre-calculus class, those courses will be offered, but more of really, how do those, the concepts contained inherent in those, how do they work? To quote a 1938 newspaper article, how they would help students in solving real-life problems mathematically. So, you know, you talk to our math teachers in our district, and the ones, I haven't obviously talked to them all, but the ones that I've talked to, particularly some at San Marcos High School, are just extraordinarily excited about the opportunities and the potential there. I wanna remind you of our implementation and let Dr. Puss and Ms. Idelson know that this is, the implementation of the Common Core is not new in our district. It started several years ago under Dr. Sarvis, Ms. Swawski, and Dr. White. They entered into a partnership with the International Center. The International Center became kind of our in-house expert, providing resources, providing insight into kind of the meaning behind the content standards in English Language Arts and Math. There was quite a bit of district-level leadership work. There was some voluntary school leadership work, where schools were able to go to a conference. Not everyone was required to go. I think those that did go, the feedback that I, this was prior to my arrival, but the feedback I got from the schools that went was very valuable. They found the experience really helpful in clarifying their understanding of the shift from the California standards to the Common Core. This passed, and then, which, surprisingly, not every district did, and I was very happy to hear that we had done that, we gave every teacher a copy of the Common Core and said, here's your copy. You know, there wasn't, we didn't, we might've gone the extra step and done like maybe book clubs, or, but we at least gave them to everybody and said, there's an opportunity at your leisure, read through them, get to learn about them, understand them, grapple with them, and many, many, many teachers did exactly that. This last year, which was, we continued our partnership with the International Center. We then brought in all of the teachers in the district, broken down by secondary and elementary, and attended a workshop introducing English Language Arts and Mathematics by, you know, the national expert in the Common Core. And we also continued our leadership development, mostly with our school site leaders, our principals. This past year, we've broadened our partnership and included the County Office of Education, who have really facilitated a lot of great workshops under the director Susan Salcedo, and we've had teachers attending those workshops from our elementary schools and our secondary schools as well. We are in K-6, doing a lot of grade-level work. That's kind of been the focus of it. In fact, today, we had our grade, elementary school teachers broken up into grade levels at various school sites, working on, looking at the Common Core. In our 7 to 12 areas, under Dr. Doughty's leadership, we have put together some very dynamic groups that are looking at how best to roll it out, what does it look like, how would we organize it? Do we even know what they are in relationship to what we've been teaching? And you'll learn a lot more about the details of that in the next six weeks, as we get into the details. One thing I wanted to mention was the assessment Smarter Balance. Yay, we've dropped off a couple of grades from our, from the state assessment. We're only assessing grades 3 through 8 in grade 11. We're not assessing second graders anymore, or 9th and 10th graders. And the best thing that Smarter Balance has done is they have involved classroom teachers from every single stage of the item development. There hasn't been a moment in that process that they have not included great people going and working with kids every day, and I think that was brilliant. That was a clear mistake in the early draft of the California Standards Test by ETS. When you first looked at it, and you thought, whoa, who wrote these questions? So, that's why I think when you bring forward some of them, and you look at them, it'll be clear. Well, these are things that teachers would like to ask kids to do in classrooms, to demonstrate their understanding. It's been really well-done. The other thing that's really unique is the online, computer-adapted testing that's gonna happen, which is kind of a smart testing. You answer the question this way, you're gonna get asked a different kind of question based upon your response here. I think that makes the assessment much more dynamic and much more informative for the classroom teacher and for schools as well. We're gonna get snaps out of student performance, student achievement, growth. We'll be able to measure at schools and the district. It's very exciting that the superintendent of Public Instruction today, in his press conference, I didn't know he was gonna have a press conference today about this, talked about the fact that he is, in his proposal, he is going to have all the districts' student performance assessment. There's a period of time in which it appeared that that might be an option, and California, at least, he's proposing that that's part of the state testing system, which educators know is important, because that's real-time info on how kids are doing. So, what else should I say? Oh, a really neat thing, next slide, a really neat thing that's happened with Smarter Balance is they released a blueprint this past month, and the blueprints are great, and you'll learn more about those. But they have some really specific, how long kids will be assessed, how many questions, what the questions look like, how many will be passive response, how many will be open-ended. And so, you'll have ideas to what, at grades 3, grades to grade 11, what those will look like, how long kids will be assessed. We were not selected to be one of the pilot districts, but that piloting is gonna be due February 20th, and go through May. It'll be great for all of us to learn how that goes, what that looks like. We had three schools selected? Oh, we did? Oh, well, thank you. That's-
Lacalina.
Lacumbra.
Laquesta and Peabody.
Oh, wow. Great. Cool. Well, that'll be really helpful for all of us. Social Science and Science, the emphasis, as I stated, is on creating literacy. Just today, again, the superintendent of Public Instruction announced that we're moving forward with the next-generation science standards. We're in a consortium of, I believe it's 25 other states that work together to put together that draft, which were released today for public comment. They've been available for, I guess unofficially, for quite a while now, but that's great. Social Studies, they're still fighting. Yeah, I think the experts in the field are still, can't come to some agreement yet, so hopefully, they will soon. So, the last slide is, I wanted just to give you the board presentations. Our next board meeting, we'll talk about mathematics. Ben and Emilio will lead that, but I know they'll have teachers and principals that'll do most of the talking. The following will be English Language Arts. Then, we'll spend two board meetings on the assessment process, and since we will have had three schools participate in it, it'll be good to get a report out on the actual practice. And then, we'll conclude in March with a presentation on how the professional development has worked, what our plan is for the remainder of the year, and all of next year as we implement the following year. So, really, the purpose today was to kind of outline in broad strokes what we intend to do over the next several board meetings, and if there are other things that you would like to see us discuss, we wanna know that, and we'll do our best to get you our presentations, at least an outline of them, way in advance of the board meeting, so that if there are things in that topic area that are unclear, or you want more info on, we could try to get that done before the board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Ms. Parker?
I can't remember when exactly you provided this. I know that some of us, at least, saw that article about implementing the Common Core standards in mathematics by Dr. Wu, a professor out of UC Berkeley, and just really described the difference between current practices in elementary mathematics teaching, and how different Common Core mathematics will be and is. But what I appreciated about, what he talked about is how the de facto national curriculum for math is textbook, school math, and that essentially, teachers teach whatever the textbook publishing, you know, chapters have come forth. And that is true in mathematics, but that's also really true in Language Arts as well, especially at the elementary level, when we're talking about, you know, in our district, it's open court, where, you know, this is what you're teaching in this order. And I think that what we see, and a lot of teachers concerned, is that there is no adopted textbooks for the Common Core. And so, teachers are moving forward, districts are moving forward, and they're trying to sort of adapt what they have. State Board, I don't know if they have put out the supplemental materials list, or they're about to put out the supplemental for, they've just done math?
For math, yes.
But not for English Language Arts yet.
That's correct.
But I think that as part of this discussion, we should be talking about curricular materials.
Well, our goal is, I don't know if you recall our four-quarter plan. We're in quarter one, which is knowing the content standards and demonstrating an understanding of them. And quarter two is an analysis of content materials, which would, will be the very next thing that we do, which will be looking at existing materials and looking at materials that are now available. And I agree that, and I think most educators would agree, that are confident in their subject matter, that we need to move away from a textbook-driven approach to a content-driven approach, and I think the Common Core will help us do that.
Dr. Puss?
I would be interested, as we move forward in this whole process of, especially now that we're kind of getting a sense that in California, we're gonna look at formative assessments, how we as a district are gonna implement that or do that. And so, as we move forward, having more of that information is really important for me, because I completely agree. I think having that type of information for both site administrators and teachers themselves as we're moving forward is really critical.
Will do.
And the only thing that I would say, and I think if you're this would be before Dr. Cash, is that I would love to see sample questions, because the way that I've been able to explain Common Core to the public is just giving them a sample question. And so, I think they're interesting, and it really shows the change that's coming. It's not the-
Well, if you come to the parent advisory committee meeting on Friday, Mr. Handel's gonna be doing a couple of sample questions-
Sample questions? Well, there you have it. I will be ready, and I will make sure to just go in to listen and observe in the case that I don't know the answer, so thank you.
Yeah, be safe.
All right.
I'd have to comment on that. I was at Washington School at a math program, and our illustrious leader was there on the floor, answering the questions put out by Barry.
Wait, helping the students. I wasn't giving them the answers. I was walking them through the process.
But to see our president on the floor with these kids, one-on-one, it was amazing. I think you were there too, yeah. It was amazing. I stood in the background, but she was right in there mixing it up with her. It was fantastic.
Mr. Herron. All right. Well, thank you. And this brings us to the end of our conference agenda. We don't have any consent items that we need to return to, because we've voted on those. Coming events, I think we've discussed, and we have a list of the open houses.
We have the Board Governance Workshop on Friday.
We do. We have the Board Governance Workshop on Friday from 1:30 to 4:30.
Yes.
At the Radisson in Santa Barbara, Ramada, sorry, Ramada in Santa Barbara. And future agenda items, board, are there any items that you'd like to see come forward to us?
We do have public comment on-
Oh, I'm sorry. And we have public comment.
John Reed.
Thank you, President, Board Members, Superintendent, Board Staff. I'm requesting a discussion at the next board meeting on the proposed solar at Washington Elementary for their new library that's scheduled to be installed in the summer. As you recall, from public comment I made at the last board meeting, or maybe two board meetings ago in December, I am a parent at Washington, hoping to see that the plans for the Washington Library get revised slightly to include a photovoltaic system of some kind, and not only to offset future energy costs, but also to provide a foundation for education within new technologies. We have yet to put any kind of photovoltaics in our district, and Washington and other new buildings are the perfect place to do it. There was a report, as you probably know, at San Marcos, that because the building is a little bit older and the roofs need a repair, there's a little delay on trying to put solar at San Marcos, so I'm just hoping that-
Mr. Reed, I just wanna remind you, this is about future agenda items, so we actually can't take a presentation on it right now, but-
Okay. My apologies. I'm not familiar, so-
No, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's just a request, then, for discussion next time at the board meeting on the-
So, we will make a note of this. I know we're not always able to put it on the immediate board meeting, but we will do our best to think about how we move forward and have a public discussion in which you could gladly, and we would welcome your input.
Sure, and I'd probably do it in partnership with people from the district and other people I've been working with, and just to let you know, it's been going on for two months without too much progress in my mind, but I'd like to see, you know, that changed.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other future agenda items? Mr. Herron?
Only if it's important to us, but I think just recently, California got declined on its waiver for No Child Left Behind.
It did.
If that has an effect on us, I'd like to have a report on what that effect is, or when we know, when we know what the effect is.
It will, if I can, yes, I will do that.
Anything else? All right. So, with no additional future agenda items, we adjourn our meeting.
You can't, I really, I forgot about that.